We could all stand for the President of the House and remain seated. I'm on the side.
The President is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I have a checkup with the directors, please? Ms. Kimmich, here. Ms. Good, here. Mr. Kovac.
Here.
Dr. Kaufman.
Here.
Mrs. Hamley.
Here.
Ms. Holt.
Here.
Ms. Kimmich. Oh, here we go, I'm sorry. Ms. Aleo.
Here.
Ms. Lowry. Ms. McCurdy.
Here.
Are there any additions to the agenda? If none, can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'm moved.
A second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Executive session was held November 25th from 6:03 to 6:20 PM to discuss personnel and consult with attorney. An executive session was held tonight from 5:30 till 6:05 to discuss grievance hearing. We're going to move on to the board goals. Oh, I'm sorry. I keep it missing. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes? We have a motion, a second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. At this time, I call on Mrs. Patrowski to review board goals.
RESD will provide learning opportunities to meet the needs of a diverse population in a dynamic workforce. RESD will continue to build transparent and trusted relationships with all stakeholders. RESD will continue to build a culture of safety and support for all students, staff, families, and the community.
Thank you, Mrs. Patrowski. At this time, we'll have public comment. The purpose of public comment is not to debate the board, but rather an opportunity to address the board on matters of concern, official action or deliberation, which are or may be before the board. The board requires that the public participants be residents, including pupils of this district or taxpayers of this district. Those wishing to address the board must state their name and address when recognized by the president of the board. Each individual will have three minutes to address the board. Mr. Seeley?
Stay down, so we can follow. William Seeley, Opulon City Road, which way here. The thing I'm looking at, having looked at the new agreement which the board won last month, I believe that this district is indeed due to... The only thing I can say which may resolve it would be to involve legislators seeking additional aid because there is additional aid going out now, but not supported by the state. And I just know that my first job in Pennsylvania, the superintendent at that time said, "Carry on this." I looked at him, I said, "What for?" He said, "Carry it on." And that is projects which the district had done, paying full, full tilt. Anyway, two years later, all of a sudden they backed fund this. And all you needed was the dollars expended, you know, clarification, invoices, et cetera, cementum. And we received something like $3 million under that design. So I don't want to say anything negative about legislators, but they tend to group together. And if you can develop this pattern, perhaps you can get aid on funding which you're paying right now. Big money, okay? You're looking for money, and that's a good place to get it. The other thing, looking at the contract which you purchased, five-year contract, I believe you should have your business administrator crush it out. Not a 10-minute job, but about a 20-minute job. Project it out in terms of expenses in the future. And you're going to have to see where perhaps you're going to have to cut back on several items, which are very, very expensive. One thing which I would consider would be looking at special ed. Quite a few special ed. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Seeley. Next on the agenda is student of the month, but due to the school closing today, we are going to move the students of the month to January. Board business, we have old board business of the PA Solar. I don't have any updates, I didn't hear anything from them for the holiday. Under new board business, the I-9 meeting will be in December, on the 15th. We have principal reports. Mr. Heidl?
Thank you. In addition to my board report that's on here, just some highlights that I want to make the board aware of. In conjunction with Mr. Fodolski, the middle high, with our large kindergarten class up here now, which we're at 70, through working Wednesdays down at the middle high, the kids that are doing everything that they're supposed to during that timeframe, instead of them being in homerooms, they're going to come to the FSG. We're going to carpool them back and forth with the student band. They're going to help the kindergarten students with some of the skills of cutting, pasting, little reading groups, but I thought that was a good way of working together here with both buildings to get the kids more involved with the little ones and try to help with that big kindergarten class that we have. The second highlight we have, FSG kind of partnered with First Energy. They are coming here on December 11th. All students, 354 of them, are going to receive kits from First Energy. They're going to do a really neat 45-minute presentation. The kits will include LED light bulbs, LED nightlights, and all kinds of gadgets for the kids to go home. The school will receive $150 donation on behalf of First Energy. And each classroom teacher will get a $15 award to kind of buy something for their classroom. And then last but not least, I kind of mentioned it Tuesday at the workshop. On starting Thursday, December 4th, we're starting our grade level team meetings, which we only had three times scheduled throughout the year. Now we're going to do them twice per nine weeks. And hopefully that's going to address some of the needs that we need academically, in the classroom, and behaviorally for the kids. Any questions?
No, thank you, Mr. Heidl. At this time, Mr. Fodolski?
I want to first start off by kind of piggyback off of what Mr. Heidl said about trying to get as many opportunities for the high school kids to get to the elementary school. We also have Mrs. Chamberlain, her class wrote books. And so they're going to, next week, start coming and reading them to the kindergarten classes. Each kid that wrote a book is going to get a chance to come and read to those kids. So they're going to be doing that during their remediation time. Another thing that happened here at the middle school was they had the middle school play. It was well-attended, the kids did really well. We were lucky enough to be able to see the first showing during the end of the school day. And a lot of community members and stuff came over the weekend for that play. And thanks to Ms. Nicole Chu and Jamie Mathis. We've been really pushing our Elkhart Classroom cupboard. We've been trying to get food to families in need. That has been a big success. Just even on Wednesday, when I was at school, even though school was out, we had a phone call from a parent that wanted some food and stuff for Thanksgiving. So we were able to get a bag for them. So that has been well-used and thankful that we can offer that as a district to the people in the community. And other than that, we're just gearing up for Christmas and lots of activities going on. Winter sports are slated to get started this week. We have a lot of students who are involved in the sports world. So that's very good to see them involved, not just in the classroom, but also in their sporting events. It's nice to see them do really well, and it also pushes them to do well in the classroom. So that's something that I'm really proud of. Other than that, we've just been going along, enjoying our extra-long break that we had today. Our online opportunity that we had seemed to go pretty well. I didn't hear too many problems today. Just a couple things with logging in, but I was able to help them. And so that was a good use of our time today. Is there any questions?
No, thank you, Mr. Fodolski. At this time, the supervisor of Special Education Services, Erin Heidl.
Thanks, Amy. So just to recap again, we're still having our homeless drive. It started November 17th, and it goes until December 12th. I can express enough thanks to our community. In January, I'll be providing some specific thanks to a ton of local businesses that have really stepped up. It is so far the most successful homeless drive we've had, and it's still not over yet. So I'm very pleased with our community, our businesses downtown. They really stepped up to provide some bigger, larger items that I don't ask for for the students to bring in. So like I said, I'll be sharing that in January and how we're boxing up the items to give out to our families that are in need. So that drive is still going on, so I just wanted to mention that. The other big thing going on in my office now is numbers. And I know it sounds like you're just counting kids, and how long does it take to count kids? But there's a lot more information than that that needs to go to the state. I do believe my number that's going to be going to the state is about 172. There is a lot of other information that has to go as well. But with those 172 kids, I have my normal numbers that I usually have in here, but I did want to break down my chart a little bit different. We utilize this in leadership at times when we're talking about staffing adjustments. And it is just broken down by grade level, from the kindergarten through 12th grade. And then when it says minus ELA, minus math, instructionally, those are the students in special education that are not in their homeroom, instructionally. So for kindergarten, for example, for ELA, there are 12 students taken out across the grade level for ELA instruction, and then 12 for math. It's not always the same because the students' needs are different. You can see a lot of the, most of the numbers are not 12 and 12. That just wasn't left to the draw there. My next column is special ed versus in 504 identified. This isn't just a special ed number list. I also included our Chapter 15 or 504 students because a lot of them require assistance from the students or from the teacher, my special education staff. So that number right there is the number of identified special ed and/or 504 students in each grade versus the total number of kids in each grade. So like you can see in kindergarten, there's 23 students identified, there's 70 kids in the grade. That comes out to 33% of the students in that grade level receiving special education services. And then the number to the left of that is just the kids that are left in the room for the core instruction. Core instruction is your ELA and your math blocks, especially here at the elementary level. So you can see, you know, the different numbers as you go down. I anticipate larger numbers at the elementary school. I'd like to see when the students get up into those upper grade levels that my numbers are dropping. A lot of those students in 9th, 10th, 11th, and 12th, those are my heavy 504 grades. So, but overall, their numbers, my biggest class has been for a while is the eighth grade class. Another heavy class that's come up through is my third and fourth grade class, and then of course, my incoming kindergarten class. So those are numbers in a different way for you that I presented tonight. At the bottom there, in my 172 kids, there's actually 162 that we instruct here in the district. There are 10 students that are either at Jep Tech. There's a couple of special ed students at Rockets. And then there are a few students that we actually have educationally placed for different academic and/or behavioral reasons. So I just, the rest of my numbers are the same that they usually are, but I just wanted to highlight that tonight. So does anybody have any questions on that? Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Heidl. At this time, Mrs. Seilinger for the business report.
Thank you, Ms. Kimmich. My report is attached as well as the budget to actual for month ending November. Obviously, we finally got our state budget, which was great news, passed on November 12th. After four days and 12, or I'm sorry, four months and 12 days, passed the deadline. We continue to operate by limiting spending, limiting spending outside the absolute necessities and accessing the district reserves to meet those obligations. At this time, there's approximately 40% of the funding due to the district has been released and received. We are processing payments that we have on hold, including cyber tuition bills for placements. Those are all in the process of being processed. And the invoice list on the agenda tonight, which is a pretty steep invoice list, I believe it's around $170,000, includes a good portion of those bills that were being held into the budget. So that's why that number is pretty elevated. I also had shared with you a budget funding document that showed the difference in what we had proposed, what the governor had proposed, and what we actually got against what we budgeted. And in the end, we ended up getting about $200,000 more than what was budgeted in our budgeted numbers. I shared that with you guys a couple of weeks ago. But I also shared tonight, I added in board docs today because I just finished it up this afternoon. And I put a hard copy in your folders. Because I added to that the increased costs that weren't budgeted, just so you could see that reflection. So at the bottom of that spreadsheet, I added the additional costs that were accrued after the budget passed. So when we negotiated the teacher contract, there was a difference in the percentage that I budgeted for versus what was actually budgeted. There was also a difference in the admin contracts, budgeted versus what was actual. And then I did list the pending litigation that we don't know exactly what that's going to come in at, but that's a ballpark number that's probably fairly close. So those total over budget were about $120,000. So that's just to give you a reference, to see how quickly some of that funding disappears, if you will. By nobody's fault, it's just the nature of the operation. So I wanted to share that, Mr. McCurdy had asked for that a while back. So that's information for you to have. We also received the draft statements for the 24, 25-year end from the auditors. Our annual financial report, which was due to the state on November 30th, was indeed completed and submitted on time. The auditors are finishing up the language portion of the audit, and we will have that for presentation to the board in January. So that will come in January. We are currently working on the 26, 27 budget. It seems like we just finished one and we're on to the next, but we're working on that. And we'll have information to share at the January work session. I'm assuming we're going to hold our ad-hoc after work session meetings as we have in the past, unless anybody has any other suggestions. I'm open to suggestions if that doesn't work. The middle high secure entrance, the bid deadline was November 25th. The bids were received, and the opening took place at 11:00 AM on November 25th in the business office. HHSDR was on-site for the bid opening, as well as we had four vendors that also were present for the bid opening. The bid tally was presented at work session. There's also a formal bid tally on the agenda tonight, which includes the successful bidders and motions for approval for that project. There is a drawing on the agenda tonight, too. I don't know if you had time to look at it, but it gives that layout of what that will look like once that project is completed. I also included my numbers for cyber, rockets, placements, and Jep Tech. The November PNL for nutrition is not available yet because the meeting is early, so I haven't received that yet, so I don't have that update on here. So next month, you'll probably see two updates there. And that concludes my report.
I have a question for you, Donna.
Sure.
On our deferred invoices, are we paying penalties on those?
No. I did not hold any invoices that would have occurred any kind of late fees or payments.
Wonderful, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. At this time, we'll have the superintendent report.
Sure. My report's attached, just a couple of highlights. We did receive $5,000 CMB donation. So we're going to split that donation. We have 43 students that are taking dual enrollments. They have multiple programs that we can choose what we're going to use that money for. And so we chose to give $50 back to each of our dual enrollment kiddos that are taking dual enrollments. And then the elementary school is going to do an after-school literacy program, which will use the rest of the money to fund. Shay Brigger is going to head that up. Also, we have our calendar committee, and we went through our calendar. So that will come in January, the approved calendar from our calendar committee will be available for the January meeting. Also, there's a lot of legislative updates that I put out. The state recently put out a whole nother packet. So I wanted to just highlight some of the things that came when the budget came, some of the school code changes, just so you're aware. They are beginning to change some of the certifications. Many, many years ago, it was a K-6 certification, a 7 to 12 certification, and they started to separate those out, pre-K to 3, and 4 to 8, and then 7 to 12. And it got very difficult to find fifth-grade teachers because nobody was getting a certification in that area. And so they're going back to the primary, the pre-K to 6, and the secondary 7 to 12 certifications. So that's something that's kind of interesting, that, you know, the pendulum's starting to go the other way again. Also, and from school safety, we have to now, as a safety coordinator, have to have a quarterly safety committee, not to be confused with the safety. Well, this committee that we have, this one has to do with school safety, so we're going to do that. And it has to be with the administrators, so it's going to be a function of our leadership every quarter. So that will get reported out in our once-a-year safety report, who was at each meeting and what we talked about. Also, they put into place where a student who is habitually true and in school can no longer transfer out to cyber school. So if they're not coming to school, they're not going to be allowed to transfer out to cyber school unless the judge determines that it's in the best interest of the child. So that's interesting. Just a couple other pieces that you need to know about. They're starting to, years ago, they did this thing called structured literacy, where everyone had to be trained in structured literacy. And so now the LEAs must have an adopted evidence-based reading curriculum, and it has to be reported to the state. It has to be on their list, they haven't released their lists yet. I'm pretty sure the one that we use at the elementary school is going to be on that list. But they haven't released that list yet. And then we must screen all students, K to 3 students, for reading competency. We already do that here, which is a good thing. But now we have to report to the state any students that are identified as a deficiency. And then this, we're hoping that STAR is on that screening tool. Again, there'll be a whole list of screening tools that we're allowed to use that hasn't been released yet. So we're hoping that we have a lot of things already in place for those changes. But we're waiting to see what's on the approved lists. So those are just some things that got approved with the school code and the budget when that came through. Does anybody have any questions on any of that? I have lots of pages of it, those are just some highlights.
On the third grade reading literacy, is this patterned after what Mississippi is doing? Apparently, that's a critical time in development.
So I won't say it's patterned after what Mississippi is doing, but our third grade reading scores from PSSAs are one of the things that we've always looked at as a preclude to what's going to happen as they move forward. So yes, I'm not sure what they're doing, but...
Now, Mississippi found that if you, if by the end of third grade, a child has not reached reading proficiency, that their likelihood of success throughout the rest of their education, academic career, is far less. And that it is more effective to retain them until they do achieve third grade proficiency. Then they do much better for the rest of their school career. And then there's another correlation, and that has to do with people in prison, where so many of these people are not literate, they can't read right, and so, correctly. And so the expectation is, with more literate people, less incarceration. And so anyhow, I just thought that was an interesting thing.
And it's one of the pieces of NTSS. So a lot of those pieces are in place for us. It's just pulling it together, and we have to report all of that to the state. And that's my report. Does anybody have any questions?
Any other questions? Thank you. At this time, Mr. McCurdy, buildings and grounds.
Yes, it's up to me to make a motion that we approve, award the contracts for the renovations, that's that entry thing up at the high school, to three contractors. For general construction, Orr and Sons, to the tune of $245,446. For the mechanical contracting, to Fred L. Burns, for $99,845. And for the electrical construction, to New Co-Electric, in the amount of $59,500.
Second, so that's a motion?
That was a motion.
Okay.
Second, I've got a question. I see three contracts here. Does the general contractor oversee the others?
Yes.
Okay, good deal.
And those amounts were within the budgeted now?
Right.
Thank you. All right. So do I have a second on the motion?
Yeah.
We'll call both, please. Ms. Good?
Yes.
Mrs. Aleo?
Yes.
Mr. Kovac?
Yes.
Dr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mrs. Hamley?
Yes.
Ms. Holt?
Yes.
Mrs. Lowry?
Yes.
Mr. McCurdy?
Yes.
Ms. Kimmich?
Yes.
Finance items? Mrs. Lowry, did you want to do that, or do you want me to assign it to somebody here?
Will you assign it, because there's a lot of feedback when I speak.
Sure.
I move that the Ridgeway Area School Board approved finance items 10A, dispensy, as listed.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions on the motion? Roll call vote, please. Mrs. Ailio?
Yes.
Mr. Kovach?
Yes.
Dr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mrs. Handley?
Yes.
Ms. Holtz?
Yes.
Mrs. Lowery?
Yes.
Mr. McCurdy?
Yes.
Ms. Good?
Yes.
Ms. Kevin?
Yes.
Motion carries. We have policies that we reviewed. I move that the Ridgeway Area School District approved policy items 11A as listed. Second, are there any questions on the motion? Roll call vote, please. Mr. Kovach?
Yes.
Dr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mrs. Handley?
Yes.
Ms. Holtz?
Yes.
Mrs. Lowery?
Yes.
Mr. McCurdy?
Yes.
Ms. Good?
Yes.
Mrs. Ailio?
Yes.
Ms. Kevin?
Yes.
Motion carries. Personnel items, Dr. Kaufman?
I move that the Ridgeway Area School Board approved personnel items listed 12A through 12G.
Second.
Wait, wait, wait. There's a mismatch in what it says.
The...
I think M and G are...
...have been here for information a lot.
Oh, okay, my mistake. Let me revise that then. I move that the Ridgeway Area School Board approved personnel items 12A through 12E as listed.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any questions? Roll call vote, please. Dr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mrs. Handley?
Yes.
Ms. Holtz?
Yes.
Mrs. Lowery?
Yes.
Mr. McCurdy?
Yes.
Ms. Good?
Yes.
Mrs. Ailio?
Yes.
Mr. Kovach?
Yes.
Ms. Kevin?
Yes.
Motion carries. Extracurricular activities, Mrs. Ailio?
I move that the Ridgeway Area School Board approved the extracurricular activities, items 13A and 13B, as listed.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any questions on the motion?
I do have a question about the costs.
Yep.
Just one.
Well, I see that it's, they're going to pay 1,250 a year.
Yep. And I enclosed in your folders a copy of, this is the information I had given to Brockway, based on our current team, the cost of the van, and then adding their three students would bring us to the bus cost. And those would be the bus costs. I gave those to Brockway, and he asked what we were asking. I said, "I can't tell you what to offer," and he said they were willing to offer 1,250, and we wrote it into the...
Co-op.
Agreement for your consideration.
So these are dollar figures?
Mm-hmm, they are, sorry.
So it was costing us $400, and now it's going to cost us 2500?
Correct. And they're willing to pay 1,250.
Because I thought we said at the last meeting that we would do it if it wouldn't incur any additional costs.
Well, I just wanted to give you that, first, that I would give to him. So that's why that's there.
So with Brockway, our cost is 413 dollars?
I'm sorry.
If we had to do the co-op, our bus and cost 413 dollars. So they want us to pay the other half.
I think something that we're not thinking about, though, is that next year, we could have a full team and need a bus. And it's written into the contract that they're willing to pay half, that it might not benefit us this year, but it will benefit us in the future.
If they still have?
It doesn't say.
People in the future. Is this just a one-year contract?
It's been a lengthy contract. The co-op.
I think that we should qualify. I don't think it should be a lengthy contract.
Something we need to consider, not a decision tonight, but with these co-op teams, you know, we have to work with another school to get enough participants to field a team. I think we need to consider, with the size of our student population, reducing the number of activities that we have to fewer, to concentrate our talent pool into fewer, and be able to field a team, two teams instead of three, you know, just fewer teams, but we need to consider that, because, you know, these sorts of things are getting harder and harder to afford.
Well, in gymnastics, that isn't the case, that we have to have another school to field a team.
We can send less than a full team. It's not like wrestling, where you're going to forfeit matches.
We have enough students currently. They need, I think they need five on each apparatus, I believe. I believe, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I don't want that to affect what we're doing tonight necessarily, but we need to put that into our thinking.
Any other questions on the motion? Roll call vote, please. Mrs. Handley?
Are we voting on the co-op?
Yes.
Both of them?
Do you want to vote them separately?
Yes.
Okay, so do I need a motion to separate?
I think we already have a motion. And a second.
We're both separating. Jen?
We have a...
Yes? So after the discussion, we would like to separate the two items, and we already have a motion on the floor.
Do the individuals who... Sorry, go ahead.
No, that, so we'd just like to, how do we separate the motion with one on?
If the two board members who made the motion in the second agree to separate them, you can separate them, and have the minutes reflect that, and just vote on them separately.
So, Mrs. Ailio?
I don't think I want them separated.
Okay. So we, we don't have, the person that made the motion doesn't want them separated.
Okay, then somebody has to make a motion to amend the motion to...
Separate.
Well, really, to strike the one they don't want.
Could we just vote it down?
You would be voting both of them down, then?
And then we'd be done.
And then we'd be done, okay. I follow that.
So do I have, do I have a motion to strike the...
Yes.
A motion to strike the previous motion to combine the motion?
Yes.
Do I...
So, again, I can only hear certain people. I can hear Amy Kimmich. Is there a motion to amend the main motion to remove one of the two co-op agreements?
I thought we had to strike the first one down first.
You can amend it.
Oh, amending the motion?
Amended to separate.
Correct.
No, you're not amending to separate. You're really, you're amending, somebody, the person who wants to have one of them not go forward, since you do have a motion on the floor to approve both of them, somebody should try to make an amendment to...
We want a separate, we want two separate votes.
Some people do.
Some people do.
How many people want two separate votes?
Do we have to? I don't, I'm not sure.
There's a motion on the floor to approve both of them, and there's a second, right?
Yes.
Okay, so if somebody doesn't want both of them to get voted up, or both of them to get voted down, but wants them to be separated, somebody should make a motion to amend the main motion, and then articulate how you want it amended.
So if we continue as it is, there's a possibility that the co-op with Johnsonburg will not be approved, because it is attached to the other one. I make a motion to separate.
Make a motion.
Well, we have to, we have to make a motion to re...
To amend.
To amend. We send the previous motion and amend it.
Whatever I'm supposed to do, yes.
I can't hear, I'm sorry. I can only hear Amy Kimmich, really.
Can you hear me?
Yeah. Procedurally, I can't, I don't know the words. I don't have my Robert's Rules book with me, but if somebody, let's say, makes a motion to amend the motion to separate the two of them, and there's a second, and a majority of you agree to that, the will of the majority should rule on a procedural issue like this.
Okay, so I make a motion to amend the previous motion and separate the two items.
Okay, is there a second to that?
I'll start it.
Okay, so really, you're voting to separate the two motions.
That's correct.
Each stands on its own merit.
All in favor?
Aye.
All aye?
All opposed?
Aye.
How many are opposed?
Three.
Three. Okay, so motion carries. Okay, so now we need a motion.
So I would say, since that was strangely a motion to amend, that the two, the two of them have a motion and a second, so you vote on them separately, but you don't need, you know, they're already on the floor, both of them, if that makes sense.
Not to me.
Okay.
So we make a motion to approve 13A?
Yes. Yeah, I mean, I think it's... So at this time, there's a motion to approve this co-op sports agreement resolution 2025 between Ridgeway Area School District and Johnsonburg Area School District. Second.
Yeah.
We just have to vote. That's the motion. Correct, Jen?
That's right.
Okay, so we're calling for a roll call vote. Ms. Holtz?
Yes.
Mrs. Lowery?
Yes.
Mr. McCurdy?
Yes.
Ms. Good?
Yes.
Mrs. Ailio?
Yes.
Mr. Kovach?
Yes.
Dr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mrs. Handley?
Yes.
Ms. Kevin?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, at this time, there's a motion to the co-op agreement between Ridgeway Area School District and Brockway Area School District. Roll call vote, please. Mrs. Lowery?
Yes.
Mr. McCurdy?
Yes.
Ms. Good?
Yes.
Mrs. Ailio?
Yes.
Mr. Kovach?
Yes.
Dr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mrs. Handley?
Yes.
Ms. Holtz?
No.
Ms. Kevin?
No.
Motion carries. At this time, we have our first work session in January, on January 6th, at 6:30 in the cafeteria, and we have a board meeting on January 13th at 6:30 in the cafeteria. Do I have any other matters before the board? Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Good night, Jen. Good night. Happy holidays, everybody.